I'd like to go ahead and call the Lincoln County Board of Education's September 14th, 2021 meeting to order. If you would, please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. And if you would, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the agenda, we do need to strike two individuals appearing before the board, and that's Dr. Inga Kish and Elizabeth Stoffel. Any other changes, additions, or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, I would like to make an addition. Just being a new board member, less than a year, I don't have as much experience. So this week I had some emails and some phone calls, and I'd just like maybe establish some type of communication for the board, such as me. It was my expectation that if one board member knew something, the rest of us would know it as well. So I don't know, like, I want to be able to make informed decisions for the stakeholders, and if I get phone calls, be able to answer them. So last week when we, I requested that if we do, if you do have a meeting with Mr. Madden or whoever about the metrics of the county and what's going on, that you would be able to share that with us. So last night I didn't hear anything, and I asked, and I got an email later, but I just want to be able to make informed decisions and strike out some, improve our communications with stakeholders, because like I said, I do get calls. And the other one was the concern about two members from the Atrium team not being able to speak tonight. So I know Atrium's a very strong partner and supporter of Lincoln County schools, so I did receive phone calls that I think I could have been able to answer better if I would have known the reason they couldn't speak. So I understand we have policy, but if I would have known that, I would have been able to make a stronger board and be able to communicate some of that to phone calls and emails that I had.
Policy does drive everything that we do, Ms. Heather.
Right. But I think communication for me and the stakeholders, because Lincoln County, pardon?
Or you want to add that to the agenda?
Well, I, yes, please. Communication. I thought I had the permission to speak.
Also, Policy Code Number 2310, reviewed and updated. Get your phone in there.
We can bring that to next meeting or work session. So any changes to the agenda?
Excuse me. I just, see, I'm new, so that's why I was asking questions. So do I get to talk about it, or do I not get to talk about it, or do we talk about later?
You want to add it to the agenda?
Yes, sir. I do.
So we will add that as C, Communications. Any other changes to the agenda? Are you none? I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Make the motion.
Motion, Ms. Avery. Second, Ms. Heather. And if y'all would, please remember to turn your mics on, as we do have a guest that's joining us via Zoom tonight as well. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the BOE report out and about.
So I visited Tazawa Springs and North Lincoln Middle and Lincolnston High School, and it was the first week of school, so it was great to see everybody working through just some kinks. And I was super impressed with our principals just thinking on their feet and adjusting as needed. It was just, it was really good just to walk through the schools and see everybody in there and talk to the staff. Everybody seemed excited to start the new school year, the new school year. And it was just great to see, you know, see our staff members excited. So everybody was ready to learn. It was a good thing.
Anyone else?
I would like to remind everybody about the band showcase Saturday night. I would plan to attend for that, and I would like to invite everybody to come and see our bands. They put a lot of hard work and practice, and they get a chance to showcase their talents.
And I'll just add, over the past couple of weeks, as I'm out and about, I have actually met with some constituents across our county. And I just want to thank you all for the great dialogue, the great conversation. Some of those meetings started off with people who were upset, and by the end of it, we, you know, came out knowing how each other felt about certain situations. And it's always great to be able to be out and about and talk to your constituents across the county. And so thank you for those great conversations.
I'd just like to add that sports are alive and well in Lincoln County. It looks like we're moving along pretty well with it. And it's exciting to see so many young athletes out participating each and every night. We'll move along to the individuals or groups appearing before the board. And for the agenda, we do have, beginning with Kevin Sanders. Mr. Sanders here? You'll step to the mic and state your name, your address, and then we will have a three-minute time limit. Mr. Chatley, our Dean Attorney, or Mr. Dean Chatley, our school board attorney, will be the timekeeper.
Okay.
When I raise my hand, I'll give you about a 30-second, actually you've got 30 seconds left.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I'm Kevin Sanders, 156 Country Time Lane, Iron Station. I have a child in North Lincoln High School. I came to talk about two things tonight: our overreaction to this illness and our steady erosion of our freedoms. Every day in life, we set a risk tolerance for our actions and our decisions. For example, today, I decided to drive here, right? Even though 1,373 people died driving in North Carolina in 2019, and thousands were injured. But I based that decision made on logic, risk analysis, not fear, right? That the benefit outweighed the risk. So let's talk about the risk of COVID. Lincoln County, 86,810 population, 12,772 cases, that's 14.7% of the county, 91 deaths, 0.7% chance, I mean, sorry, death rate. So if you had COVID, you had a 99.3% survival rate. What if you didn't have COVID? You live in Lincoln County, what are your chances of dying from COVID, right? Well, some simple math tells us it's 0.1%. So if I live in Lincoln County, I'm going to die of something someday, but I've got a 99.9% chance it will not be COVID, right? And that includes all ages, right? Not kids with 99.9997% chance of recovery. But because of this 1% chance, we are mandating masks on all our kids, right? These masks aren't for health, this is for control. Because if it was about health, we'd be giving out free N95 high-grade masks to people over 70 with serious comorbidities and tackling the risk of their hospitalization at the source, right? And or instead, we're mandating less efficient face coverings for not-at-risk kids in the classroom. We must stop giving into fear and emotional decision-making and start losing logic and risk analysis. We need to vote against this mask mandate. It is just the first step. Trust me, these vaccine requirements are coming next. Just giving it away. We can't stop living because we're worried of dying, and I won't. And I'm not going to teach my kids that. The reality is, we must live with this disease and make our own choices as individuals on how we deal with it in our own way. But what I've unfortunately learned over the last 18 months is we're going to do our best to disseminate, increase inequalities, punish kids, damage their futures, endlessly destroy freedoms, because our political and expert class is determined to ignore reality indefinitely. We are getting even closer to a point where a biological medical state will micromanage our individual freedoms and liberties. We will no longer recognize the country when that happens. Please, make a stand. I trust you guys, we elected you guys to help us. We need you to make a stand for logic, reason, and freedom, and vote no to fear, and vote no to mask.
Next, we have Ms. Stacy Paddington. And please state your name and your address.
Stacy Paddington, 499, 4995, Arden Gate Drive, Iron Station. In your August meeting, Ms. Ryan said, quote, "The objective is to be able to do locally what we need to do locally, not based off state numbers or world numbers, what's going on here in Lincoln County." Tonight, you could have heard firsthand accounts of what's going on here in Lincoln County. Dr. Inga Kish, Chief Medical Officer for our county hospital, Atrium Health Lincoln, signed up to speak. So did Dr. Elizabeth Stoffel with Atrium Health Primary Care in Denver. These doctors are experts, seeing firsthand what is going on. You initially approved their request to speak. Yesterday, you told them they couldn't speak because they don't live in Lincoln County. They provide care in Lincoln County. Even if you won't let them speak publicly, you have received letters from physicians across our community supporting mandatory masks in schools. We need to listen to the medical doctors who serve our community. Mr. Madden set the high-risk transmission benchmark for our county as a 14-day moving average of 43 cases per day. When we passed that, Mr. Madden formally requested mandatory face coverings in schools. That request was for a minimum of 30 days, with the flexibility to extend further as determined by county metrics. Our county metrics show that that 14-day moving average has been above 43 cases every day since August 10th. That moving average has been above 55 cases every day since August 19th. We're not even close to falling below the high-risk benchmark. Lincoln County Health Department also tracks the percentage of cases made up by children under 18 over a two-week period. Children used to make up about 14% of cases in our county. That crept up to 17, then 19, then 22%. School started, and last week's report showed children made up 31% of new cases over the past two weeks. COVID is affecting our children in Lincoln County. In our schools, the number of cases went from 37 to 90 to 126 over the first three weeks of school. Our high level of community transmission is creeping into our schools. We need to keep it from spreading further once it gets there. There is no question what would happen if you discontinued the mask mandate. Lincoln County students would suffer the consequences, with large numbers of students at home sick or quarantining, maybe even having to move to remote learning. Kids need to be in school in person. I believe you would find very little support for remote learning. Under current conditions, mandatory masks are the only way to keep kids in school in person. Please, continue the mask mandate.
Please excuse me, I'm not quite sure how to pronounce it, but Whitney Hafley?
Hi, my name's Whitney Hafley, and I live at 427 Doves Crest Court, Stanley, North Carolina. I'm part, I'm a parent of a first grader in Lincoln County. I know you vowed to follow the Health Department guidance where masks will be mandated, while county rates are above 50 per 100,000 per day. Seeing as that's still the case, I assume you will continue with the mask mandate. But I can't help but worry. I worry because while you said schools shouldn't be many health clinics, and that this shouldn't be political, you still voted against the advice of the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics. I worry because when the Chief Medical Officer of Atrium Lincolnask asked to speak tonight to support masks, you denied her. After the last meeting, I saw the majority didn't trust the science of masks. So I thought maybe math would do the trick. Let's go over some numbers. 112 of the 115 North Carolina school districts now have mask mandates. That includes 56 who reversed their optional decision. It's not hard to see why. After Rowan Salisbury Schools added a mask mandate, both their positive and quarantine numbers dropped by over half. Union Academy Charter mandated masks after eight tested positive and 100 were in quarantine in the first week alone. Let's look at Union County, one of the three remain, who remain optional. Not surprisingly, they have the third highest percent of COVID child cases in the state. This week, they had 7,385 in quarantine and 479 positive cases. They've had 100, they've had 1,022 positive thus far. And before you say stopping quarantine is a good idea, I'll point out that 99 of those students tested positive while in quarantine. So that would have been almost 100 students who were seemingly perfectly healthy that would have been in school spreading the COVID around. This surge is affecting kids like never before. Right next door, in non-mass South Carolina, two kids have died this month, a fourth grader and a 10th grader. So don't tell me that kids aren't at risk. In unmasked Lancaster, South Carolina, two teachers died in one week. Numbers don't lie. There are four times more kids infected now than last year. Children under 17 make up more than 30% of cases in North Carolina. 15% of kids who contract COVID get long-haul symptoms. It doesn't take many kids to fill up the limited number of pediatric ICU beds we have available. To quote Dr. Dugans from the UNC Children's Hospital, "We have put children on vents, many children on oxygen, previously healthy children are being admitted across the state." So I urge you all, when you hear calls for freedom and rights, please remember that all kids have a right to life, a right to safety, and a right to in-person class. Because if you make masks optional, it won't matter if I send my kid with a mask. When the person next to her doesn't wear one and test positive, she still has to risk sickness and quarantine. So they are taking away her right to be-
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Kimberly Singh.
Name, 1842 Pleasant Grove Church Road Cross. Sent each of you the same email on August 11th urging you to require masking and contact tracing for students and staff in Lincoln County schools. Hearing no response from most of you, I've emailed you several more times, sharing information about the Delta variant and its alarming impact across the region. But I'm not here this evening to talk about the lack of response, even though it was disappointing. Instead, I'm here to talk, I'm here to ask you to not only extend the mask mandate, but for all of you to fully support that very crucial measure. Because over the last month, many of you have tried to distance yourself from that decision, leaning heavily upon the assertion that this board and the school system are not responsible for public health. And while I understand that statement, that argument, the problem is this board provides guidance on no less than 50 matters related to staff and student health and safety. You are, and you always have been, part of public health. It may not be your core work, but it is critical to the work that you do every day. Where we are today, universal masking has proven to be the most effective way to control transmission of COVID-19 in unvaccinated populations. We've seen it in school systems across the country, we've seen it in school systems across the state, and even here in this county. Your division on something so incredibly simple, so fundamental, to the practice of public health and institutional safety does not keep our students or our community safer. In fact, it only serves to erode the trust the community has in this school board and in the school system. The students and staff of Lincoln County don't need you to make decisions based upon your personal beliefs or the opinions of people who do not have the education or the expertise to accurately interpret, much less challenge, proven principles of medicine and science. They need you to be a person with integrity, someone who will do the right thing, even when the right thing is unpopular. They need you to understand that personal rights and freedoms and choice end when that assertion of perceived rights and freedom threatens the health and well-being of another person. They need you to know that when there was a threat to their safety, no matter what it was, you made the decisions that protected every single one of them. And you did it in a way that not only unified this board, but also helped unify the community. Tonight, I ask you to listen to the medical experts, because I know you're hearing from them, and provide unanimous support to the protocols that not only protect students, teachers, and staff of Lincoln County schools, but to the families they go home to every day. Building a better school system, a better community, begins right here. And the very public division of this board is not constructive nor commendable. It just serves to breed conflict and controversy at a time when we very much need to be together. In closing, I want to use a quote that I actually came across on Ms. Ryan's Facebook page. Be who you are, be who you needed when you were younger. I love that, and I totally agree. And I love that she had it on there. Of where I stand tonight, I would encourage you to be who these kids need today. Thank you for your time this evening, and thank you for your service to the board.
And finally, we have Ms. Emily Wagner.
Name's Emily Wagner. I live at 4632 Lynnwood Road, Sherrills Ford, North Carolina 28673. I'm on Lincoln County side. My children go to- Because she was not allowed to speak tonight, I'm reading the statement on behalf of Dr. Elizabeth Stoffel. She is a board-certified family physician practicing in Lincoln County for the past 15 years. It is her professional medical opinion that the school board continue to require mandatory masking for all students and staff in Lincoln County schools. She writes, "As a physician caring for the people in our community, I feel compelled to urge you as members of the board to stand firm with this important decision involving how to safely keep children in our school, in school for in-person learning. Masks have unequivocally demonstrated that they prevent the spread of COVID-19 and are primarily responsible for the success of in-person learning during this pandemic. Mandatory masks protect vulnerable children who are unvaccinated, and yet must be indoors in large groups inside school buildings where they are otherwise at risk of becoming ill. Voluntary masking does not work, as many school systems that have tried it have demonstrated. These schools have ended up with thousands of quarantined students and were forced to return to mandatory masking or virtual learning. Keeping masks in place is essential to successfully maintaining in-person learning during this pandemic. I recognize the pressure from parents who wish to return to normal policies. No one likes to wear masks. But unfortunately, the reality of the current situation with insufficient vaccination and high prevalence of illness has made unmasked learning very dangerous. It is estimated that 50% of infections occur when people do not have symptoms. The school cannot prevent infection solely by sending people home when they are ill. Masks prevent unknowingly infected persons from exposing others to the virus and protect their wearers from breathing infected particles. I applaud the school board's courageous decision last year to keep students in person with masking and social distancing policies. At that time, it wasn't absolutely clear how well it would work. Now we know, it works. It will be a challenge to make the school year successful with masks. Although masking may be unpopular with some, without it, we risk a dismal failure. However, if you keep the mask mandate in place, children and teachers can continue to learn and work in person in a safe environment."
Those are the ones we had sign up following board protocol, but Policy 2310 also states people can speak to the board as a matter of emergent nature. Being that this has been on the agenda for the last three months, is there anybody here that has anything other than mask at this point? And I would ask the board, is there anyone that has any emergent nature, like to speak? Great, then we'll move along. Joining us tonight via Zoom, we do have Dr. Elizabeth Tilson. I'd like to welcome her to our meeting. Ms. Tilson serves as a Norclana as the State Health Director and Chief Medical Officer for the Department of Health and Human Services, and has practiced primary care pediatrics for 26 years. Dr. Tilson, thank you for joining us this evening. And also with us is David Madden, our Lincoln County Health Director. And I believe Mr. Madden's going to start with a presentation for us for the Lincoln County metrics. Been pretty short indeed, but I've got a PowerPoint here with some data regarding Lincoln County and the metrics that we talked about. And I just want to go over those with the board, review those, and then I'll turn it back over. I'm going to have, can I take this and walk with it? Okay, so I'll walk over here so I can see the data a little bit better. So as you see before you right here, this is starting... This is our year-to-date EpiGraph that you can see. This is a demonstration of all the cases for Lincoln County since our first index case that occurred last year on March the 12th. As you can see, we see where the high peak of our initial variant and novel coronavirus started right after the holidays. And what you see here at the end is the impact of Delta variant in what we're seeing as a surge. Now, those blue, orange, and green lines really represent moving averages. Is that too distracting, the way I'm speaking through that? Let me know if it gets, the audio gets a little muddled. But what we're seeing here is the primary curve that I look at is the 14-day moving average for our case counts as set by our metrics, which is the orange line. The blue line represents a seven-day moving average, and the green represents a 30. Now, as you can see, we're still in a very active event in regards to Delta. You can see that based on those Epi cases, that we're in a pretty broad set of that curvature. And we don't really know exactly what it, what it's going to do. Now typically, when you look at an Epi curve, what you want to see is a slope changing, soft, softening. That means cases overall are beginning to stabilize or possibly decrease if you get into a negative slope. What we see right now is still in a stage of active case situation where we really don't have a prediction on that. Speaking with our state epidemiologist, Dr. Zach Moore, he anticipates seeing activity into the month of October. But as it stands right now, we, you know, it's really hard to predict whether we're going to see some change where it goes up, or we see, begin to see continuation of some stable, stabilizing of the slope. This next is average days case data. This, the top-left corner represents what we saw just last week. And you see across, we have our total cases for the entire event, the past 60 days, the past 30 days, the previous 30 days, of the, of the immediate 30 days, and then a 14-day average. In the orange is basically just those unified in a column, but at the bottom is, is what you see is a percent, percent Delta change between the previous 30 days to our most recent past 30 days. As that Delta, the percentage goes smaller, that just means that the case counts from that 30-day block to the next 30-day block is getting closer. And what you really like to see, if it get into a positive state, which means we're seeing a reduction in cases from the immediate 30 days to the previous 30. So what we're seeing here, this important, is 58.1 cases averaging per day on a 14-day period. So we, one of your speakers mentioned a little bit about what we're seeing from the timeframe of the school start. We're seeing about 247 students resulted positive. 88 of those students were quarantined, and that was primarily due to mask issues, whether masks were not worn like a lunch period, or proper, possibly an improper mask situation and the contact tracing that was determined to be a exposure. Of those quarantined, 47 sought testing, 44 resulted negative, three resulted positive. So you can see that's 6.4 for that sample group. 41 did not seek testing. This is just a graph showing the past 30 days in our cases. But the only thing that is really notable here is just a slight concern where you're seeing a upward tick on, on these last days, which is still indicative that the surge for Delta is still currently active. Case demographic snapshot. On the case demographic snapshot, what you're seeing here is a 30-day demographic snapshot, and then the past 14 days. The, on the factor, the index factor, that, I just want you to explain that quickly. That relates to how these groups compare to the senior population, which is a 65-plus demographic. I was tracking that from the very beginning, just to see how cases were evolving. That's not necessarily that pertinent for tonight's discussion, but I just didn't remove it from the snapshot. But you can see, over the past 30 days, 27% of those have been in the 0 to 17 range. And the past 14 days is now up to 36%. And you can see the factor is significantly different if you do look at that, and is the case rate per 10,000 for that time period. And our current positivity rate for Lincoln County, based on the number of cases, tests conducted, has, is 14.1%, which still puts us at the upper end of substantial transmission based on the metrics that we set. And the state average is 13% currently. This is the case activity of active cases versus new. Again, you're, you're seeing basically a mimic of the EpiGraph, but what's important here is looking at the teeth on those orange, on the orange plot, which is essentially showing a higher spike, more narrow cases. That's just indicating that you're in a much active period. You see where the teeth get flatter, fatter, and lower on the areas where you see a lower number of the blue lines, which are the active- You see where the teeth get flatter, fatter, and lower on the areas where you see a lower number of the blue lines, which are the active cases. That just demonstrates that we are still seeing some activity, a lot of activity in regard to Delta, and a lot of transmission from a community-based analysis. That was a 10-month period, by the way. This is just to give you an average of hospital data. I'm not really here to speak on hospital data. I know the hospitals are dealing with a lot right now based on their their bed occupancy. But this just gives you a demonstration of what we're seeing in average daily hospitalizations related to COVID. And for Lincoln County, you see that's 39. You see the shading indicates severity for based on that number. That just gives you an idea of where we are. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Madden. Next, we'll move to Dr. Tilson. Dr. Tilson? Thank you for joining us tonight, and we'll turn it over to you.
Wonderful.
Dr. Tilson, we're sorry, we we can't hear you right now. We could at the beginning, but we can't at this time.
But you can't now? Can you hear me now? Oh, perfect.
Yes, we can, thank you.
You went away again. Dr. Tilson?
We can't hear you.
Can't hear me again?
Well, every time we turn our mics off, we can't hear you.
Huh.
Now we can't see you. Now we can see you. But we can't hear you.
Can't hear me now? No?
Yes. No. Do you have a chalkboard? We can't hear you.
Can you hear? There we go.
It's coming and going.
Can you hear? Can you hear me now?
Yes, no touching, Dan.
We did for a second.
Says my bandwidth is low. Maybe that's the problem. I'm wondering if I can just call in on a phone instead of the video. Maybe that'll be more consistent. I just texted Director Madden.
You're doing good right there, just stay close to the screen.
All right, well, we'll try. I think it's a network issue, not a screen issue, but let's let's just try. And we'll see how it goes. How about that? Okay, and you all give me a hand sign if you can't hear me again, and then we'll we'll just go from there and see what we can do to salvage. Okay, so first, I really wanted to very sincerely thank you for your leadership in public service. I know this has been a very hard year and a half, and I really appreciate you all being leaders, showing up, making the hard decisions, being in that public spotlight. So thank you, I sincerely appreciate that public service and leadership. And really appreciate the ongoing dialogue and communication and the invitation to be with you tonight. As you started the the meeting, the communication and transparency is really important for us all to get through this together. So I'm I'm very, very grateful for your service and for the invitation. And we all share the same common goal. We all want our children and our teachers and our staff in-person learning. We all know that is the best place for our children and our teachers is in-person learning. And balancing that with decreasing, having the lowest risk of viral spread, not just in the classrooms, but in other school settings and in the community as well. So I know we all share that same common goal. And I do want to talk through some of the layered prevention strategies that are in that strong stool, school's toolkit that I know you've been looking at. But before I get into some of the evidence and the science behind those prevention strategies, I do just want to acknowledge the context that we are in. Because when we talk about the concept of layered prevention strategies, you can't really do that without that contextual context. And so what you have heard prior to me is understanding that we are still in a state of very high viral spread, statewide, but also within Lincoln County, that we are in that state of high viral spread. And so when we, in that context of higher viral spread, we're going to need to have more layers of prevention in place to keep that viral transmission low. When we get to a period, and we will get to a period, not sure exactly when, but we will definitely get to a period of lower viral spread. And when we get to that point, we can start taking off those layers. They are not as important when we have lower viral spread. But unfortunately, and I won't reiterate what Director Madden just said, unfortunately, we still are in a period of high viral spread statewide as well as in Lincoln County. And I do also want to emphasize a little bit about some of the changes that we have seen in the pandemic specifically related to children. We are seeing, for the first time ever in this pandemic, the highest rates of cases are in our children 0 to 17. For two weeks in a row, we have seen that for the first time that we have seen that in the pandemic, that our children have the highest rates of case rates. We also are seeing the highest number of cases associated with clusters in K-12 settings at the highest number since the beginning of a pandemic as well. So, and we know that we certainly don't want children to get sick. And although their their risk is low, it is not zero. We are seeing more children being hospitalized. Unfortunately, we have had some pediatric deaths. So we do know that children can get sick and severely sick with this illness. But overall, children do have relatively mild symptoms, but they can pass it to other adults. They can pass it to their teachers, they can pass it to other school staff, thinking about our cafeteria staff, our custodial staff, our bus drivers. And they can also very easily share it with their family members and with other community members. So we have to remember, children are not in isolation. They are part of our whole community ecosystem and thinking through that element of viral spread. And I want to just talk through a little bit some of the elements of our, in our strong stool, school, school's toolkit. And then we'll also talk about masks and talk about isolation and quarantine, as I know there were some questions around that. But I do want to point out that there isn't just one tool in that prevent that strong school's toolkit. There's multiple tools and multiple layers in that strong school's toolkit that you can layer on. And as many as you can layer on, the lower that we can reduce the risk. So first, thinking about promoting vaccination. Vaccination is still the best preventive strategy that we can employ. We know that unvaccinated people are more than four and a half times more likely to get infected than than fully vaccinated people, and more than 15 times more likely to die than unvaccinated people. So encouraging vaccination for everybody 12 and up is very, very important. And a good extra benefit from that is fully vaccinated people don't need to quarantine. But we do know that people 11 and under are not yet eligible for a vaccine. So we have to wrap other layers of prevention around those younger children. Physical distancing is actually quite an effective strategy as well. One study showing close to 80% reduction in the risk of one person, infected person spreading COVID to another, another person. And three feet forwards, good protection, six feet probably likely more. But we also know that is hard. If you're going to do full attendance in-person learning, it is very difficult to maintain that physical distancing between our children's and our staff. Three, screening testing, thinking about routine, weekly screening testing of staff and teachers and children. There's been studies that have shown that we can decrease the risk of transmission by 50% in our high schools and 35% in our primaries, in our primary schools. Ventilation, another great strategy. We've really learned a lot through this pandemic that outdoor settings, much lower risk than indoor settings. So anything we can do to increase that ventilation in an indoor setting, in mild weathers, keeping the windows open, thinking about upgrading HVAC systems, is a really effective strategy as well, so thinking about incorporating that. But of course, that is hard and expensive and and does require some time if you're going to have to do some system upgrade. So I just wanted to do a brief mention of all the other prevention strategies in that that school toolkit that you can think about operationalizing as well. Let me get to to masks, because I was asked specifically to comment of masks. As you know, the CDC does recommend universal masking for all students and staff in K-12 schools, and that is our recommendation as well. There have been numerous studies that have shown the effectiveness of masks and decreasing viral spread, especially and particularly in school settings, so that real-life application in school settings. We benefited a lot from the data from last year of what happened within school settings. Some of that, and I did forward a written document to your chair and vice chair yesterday. Some of that evidence is summarized in in two CDC Science Briefs, one specifically looking at trends in schools, one specifically looking at community use of cloth mask, of cloth masks. Also wanted to call your attention to nine peer-reviewed publications looking specifically at COVID transmission in schools. Seven different states from seven different investigation teams all have found very, very, very consistent findings, remarkably consistent findings, actually, of the effectiveness of universal masking for preventing spread in school. The other thing these studies, as well as numerous other studies, have found that where we see increased rates of spread, increased clusters, higher rates of what we call secondary transmission attack rates, those have been in instances when masks were not used or inconsistently used. For example, one study showed from two different school systems showed about 72% of the transmission in in-school was associated with inconsistent mask wearing. Other studies that have looked at settings where in general there's inconsistent mask wearing, for example, athletics or camps have showed clusters with as high as anywhere from 27 to 44% attack rate. That is a very, very high attack rate from a public health standpoint. So very high rates of of spread when there's inconsistent or no mask using. In addition, as I alluded to upfront, children aren't, don't live in isolation. They also then can transmit this to to adults, particularly their household contacts. There's numerous studies that really show that children can be efficient spreaders, especially in the household, almost as high as 88% of some household members becoming infected with the with the child bringing that home. So we just have to remember the children, it's not just the children on their own, they live in this ecosystem. And finally, a lot of this data and studies that were used to inform not just the CDC toolkit, of which you will see the North Carolina toolkit aligns very closely with the CDC toolkit. Most of this data came from pre-Delta. That was last year when our variants were were not Delta. Now, we have predominance Delta in North Carolina. It's about 99% of what's circulating in North Carolina is this Delta variant. Far more transmissible than prior variants. Prior variants, if a person was infected on average, maybe two other, they might infect two other people. With a Delta variant with person infected, they can infect up to six or eight people. So much more transmissible. So we're going to have to really learn and see what does it look like with our schools with Delta. And this is even more important, having these layered strategies because of this much more transmissible variant. There was one recent study that just came out from California that showed it with high rates of Delta circulating at the time, that a teacher, an unmasked teacher infected 50% of the students in that classroom. And there was, the closer those students were to the teacher, the higher the risk they were becoming positive. So I'm I'm pretty worried about the transmissible, transmissibility about the Delta. And again, even more the reason for having these layered prevention strategies in there. Okay, let's move a little bit to the other prevention strategies, which are our control measures, isolation and quarantine. So hopefully, if we layer all these prevention strategies upfront, you really will, you won't need to isolate or quarantine people because we can do such a good job in preventing the spread in the first place is what we all want. But the control measures is one more layer in our toolkit if it if it is needed. And they are really tried and true public health measures and well-established tools preventing the spread of highly contagious diseases like COVID-19, especially with Delta. So let me just do a couple definitions. One, isolate, isolation is what, when somebody is sick or have symptoms, you isolate a sick person. Quarantine, by definition, is the removal of someone who's been exposed to someone who has the infection during what we call the incubation period. So during the time period where they, after that exposure, they could become positive. For COVID-19, what we have found is people become positive up to 14 days after that exposure. That's why you see that quarantine period of of 14 days. And it's important to separate those people who are exposed, because if they were become positive and still around other people, then they can then infect other people, and then you propagate that chain of transmission. But again, we can avoid a lot of quarantine, which is what everybody wants, I promise. I am, I am, you couldn't have found a more, a bigger advocate for preventing kids from quarantine than me. I really want our kids in school. So there are lots of ways we can avoid quarantine. Again, having as many layered preventive strategies upfront is great. And by 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 our control measures, there are several categories of people who don't have to quarantine after close contact. One, anybody who's fully vaccinated does not have to quarantine. So really encouraging vaccination of our teachers, all of our staff, everybody up 12 and over, especially our athletes, really important. Two, anybody who's had a documented infection within 90 days. We do know there's really strong natural immunity, at least for the the first 90 days. We're learning more that that natural immunity may last longer, but we're still, we still don't have really good robust data to extend that beyond that 90 days, but for right now, at least within 90 days. And then students, if they're were both masked, if it's a mask and mask contact, then there doesn't not need to be quarantine for those students. Again, because of that robust data we had last year of that very, very, very low secondary attack rate when you have a mask and mask contact. And there's an additional potential exemption of quarantine that has to do with antibodies. It's a little bit more nuanced, a little bit more case-by-case that your health director can use on that case-by-case basis. So we do want to.
You got to stay close to the screen.
Are you waving your hand? No, no, down? Yes?
We can hear you again.
All right, thank you. I'm going to look at you, Chairman. I'm just going to, you tell me thumbs up, thumbs down, and I will, I will use you as my verbal cue. Okay, great, and I'm almost done, so we'll we'll be good. Hopefully, the our technology will hold out. Okay, so with quarantine, right, so although we can put lots of things in to avoid it, there will be some times that people do need to be quarantined. As I said, the the kind of gold standard for quarantine is that 14 days. However, there are some alternatives for shorter quarantines that I know Director Madden is aware of, with a little bit more flexibility, meaning fewer days out of school, but being sure that that people are are masked and doing as much physical distancing as possible for the for that full 14 days. So trying to have as much flexibility in those, in the quarantines. The quarantine protocols that you see published in the strong schools toolkit are those that are published by CDC as a control measures. And by statute and by rule in North Carolina, those published CDC control measures are our required control measures in North Carolina by statute and by rule. In addition, the application of those control measures like isolation and quarantine are under the authority of our our public health, our public health authority, Director Madden. And there are additional requirements of schools as part of those control measures, which I know that you know of. One, you need to report any positive case that you're aware of to the local health director. You also must share information that is requested by the local health director that they determine pertains to a COVID-19 case to prevent further spread or investigate a suspected outbreak. So there needs to be that requirement of the information sharing. And then in addition, as part of that communication, there is a requirement for the schools to ensure that the individual is complying with those control measures by excluding them from school for the duration of either the isolation or quarantine period. So I know that you are aware of those requirements and working very closely and and sounds like very collaboratively with with Director Madden, and so I'm grateful for that. Okay, so I'm nearing the end, is that, one, this has been a tremendous learning experience for all of us this year, continuing to learn with this evolving data. We've been trying to apply this about evolving data and adjust our policies going forward. I think we'll have a lot to learn to see what's happening with this Delta. And so appreciate you being on this learning journey with us. And then finally, again, just as I started, is that right now, with our time period of high viral spread, critically important to keep as many layers of prevention as possible. And then when we get to the other side of this and our cases are coming down, we can start stripping those layers out. So. So nothing is permanent. I want nothing more for all of this COVID to go away and for us not to have these conversations ever again. But we're not quite there yet. And so we all need to continue to work together so that we can get there. And in that, I'm going to stop and happy to take questions if the technology allows or continue on with your agenda and take questions via email or any other way that would work for you all.
Dr. Tilson, I would like to ask, what medically has changed from last year when the mask was mandated by the governor's office to this year where it was optional and became a local decision? Is there anything medically that changed? Or why was there a change of course if it was mandated last year and there was no choice? And this year, it is a choice for the local level?
I think a couple of things happened, maybe not so much medically, but a couple of things. One, we have a lot more tools in our toolkit right now. So we have vaccination now, which we didn't have before. We have screening testing now, which we didn't have before. And we have more knowledge and more data than we didn't, that we didn't have as much before. So now we have lots of robust data, robust evidence, so that it makes it easier for the locals, for you all to have the same information that we had to make those decisions. So those three things are different. The second thing is, and you know this more than anybody, in North Carolina, we are a very locally controlled state. Our counties are powerful and trump. And this COVID, you know, COVID is going to be with us for a while, right? So we all are going to have to figure out how to live with this and how to live with this within the way that our, our state is set up. And really, having more of that local control, that local buy-in, that local decision-making, as we move into this more sustainable approach to COVID, we're going to have to get there. And then so really, what we have now, that we didn't have before, is so much more, again, robust data and science information that helps you to make those informed decisions. In the beginning, we didn't really have that much, and so we were making our best, our, our best decisions at the time. But we're in a very different state now, I think, than we were in the beginning.
Dr. Tilson, first, I just want to say thank you so much for being with us tonight. I know you are extremely busy, I have listened to you speak at different board meetings, and I appreciate your time. I will also throw in just a little appreciation for Dr. Madden, sorry, Mr. Madden, and what a great job he is doing here in communication with us, and I appreciate him greatly. You have talked a lot tonight about layers and layering strategies for high, moderate, low transmission. Is there, is there a number of layers that have been shown effective in each phase? When I look through the toolkit, just, just, just quickly, and you know, I could be off by a number or two, but I see that we essentially have 25 layers in place right now. And so when we go to moderate transmission, do we take that down to 15 layers? Or do we take that down to 24 layers? Or what, how does that layered strategy work through those different phases? And is there a number or a quantity of layers we need or that has been proven to show effective for those different phases?
It's a really, really great question, and I'm not going to be able to give you a quantitative response. From what we were seeing last year, right, and a lot of this is based on what we saw last year, most schools had most of those layers, including the universal masking. What we didn't have last year, which we do have this year, is vaccination. So that can be a game changer as well, especially on our, in our older kids. And what we also didn't really have as robustly last year, that we have now more availability, is those screening testing in there. So we have a slightly different toolbox than we did last year from what a lot of that data that we were drawing from. So I don't think I can give you an absolute quantitative, you need this many layers for this level. I think qualitatively, I could say the more layers you can put in when your, when your viral spread is, is high, the better. And then start being able to take them off as your viral spread goes lower. What we did, though, do in the toolkit as a help is we tried to prioritize the value and the effectiveness of those layers. And so when you see the toolkit laid out, you see we started with vaccination, then masking, then testing. We were at least trying to help you prioritize those layers in the toolkit as you're thinking about taking some off.
Thank you. And then you also have given us lots of data that I'm very thankful for in studies that you sent us regarding masks and their effectiveness. Do you also have studies that you could give us that show if there are any health risks, including mental health risks for children who wear masks for seven hours a day?
The studies that I can give you that I have seen so far is not showing harm to children, including some of our folks, like I really worried about our children with some behavioral health, mental health, children on the autism spectrum where, and some of the studies that I've seen recently is that even those children with some behavioral modification can tolerate that mask well. So I have not seen any reputable data to show longstanding harm of masks. What I've seen and I'm happy to show, to share with you are studies that have shown that likely there is not a harm to children. So I'm happy to share with those, those with you as well. And I'm also happy to share with you the studies that I was citing about ventilation and physical distancing and vaccine those. I'm happy to send those as well.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question I have is regarding the legal requirements for quarantine. Can you talk to us a little bit about who has that authority?
Yeah, I'm happy to. So the, the control measures are under the authority of the state health director and the local health director. They are the ones that can apply those control measures. Now, the definition of those control measures and what those control measures are, and that is what's stated in statute and in rule, that those control measures are defined by the Public Health Commission. And they are incorporated by reference of what the published CDC control measures are those that are adopted and required as the control measures in North Carolina. And then the local health. I'm so sorry. No? Yes? Okay, great. Where did I, where did I lose you? Did I lose you when statute and rule? Where did I lose you?
The last thing I heard was in the local health department, something, but you got out on that.
Okay, and I'm happy to send this to you as well, happy to send this because there's been a lot of conversation about authority of this. So happy to send, send, send that as well. But again, the, the, the definition of what the control measures are, that is defined by statute and rule and that it is what is published CDC control measures. The local health directors have the authority to apply those control measures. But schools have requirements as part of those control measures, as I alluded to upfront, required to report the positives, to share information that the local health director requests about investigation, and then to ensure compliance with those control measures by excluding children that meet that criteria. Happy to send that in writing for you.
Thank you. I do want to walk that out operationally just a little bit because I know, obviously, you don't deal with that at the state level. So we have situations in, in a quarantine situation where, you know, let's say Billy, little Billy is positive for COVID. And little Billy is upset with Jack because Billy used to date Diane and now Jack's dating Diane. And so Billy's mom, or Billy is positive and goes out with COVID. And then Jack's mom gets a call and says, you've been a possible exposure because Billy's mad at Jack and he wants him to have to be out. And so he's told them that he was around Jack, whether he was or not. This is what Billy has said. And so Jack's mom gets a call and says, he's an exposure, you need to quarantine for, you need to quarantine him for 14 days. At this point in our, with our quarantine rules, these children are guilty until proven innocent. And that's where I struggle a little bit with these rules, is that as a state, you know, we spend an inordinate amount of time trying to keep one child safe. And I feel like we need to be spending an inordinate amount of time figuring out how to keep one child in school. And so are there any, are there any talks at the state level about looking into these quarantine rules and how we might, could possibly mask exposures or found some alternate routes? Because unfortunately, we want to say, well, if you just put masks on, everybody, nobody has to quarantine. But that's not what's happening across the state of North Carolina. We still have thousands of kids in quarantine right now because essentially, if you don't catch that positive COVID case before lunch, all these children are eating together with masks off for more than 15 minutes. Or if you're going to play sports, you have your mask off. And so I think it would be extremely helpful at the state level if we could look at some of these different measures, is there really that much difference in, you know, 15 minutes and six feet versus 30 minutes and six feet? What's the, you know, what's the difference there? And so the quarantining rules that the state has in place are certainly cumbersome for our school system and not what's best for children because we have got to have healthy children in school. So are there any, are there any conversations at the state level about meeting some of these school districts in the middle and finding some different avenues and exploring some different opportunities for that?
Yeah, thank you for your question. We've been thinking about that a lot. And again, part of the challenge is, again, based on our statute and rule, that we are required to adopt the CDC control measures as our required control measures. However, we are looking to see if there's ways that we can think about flexibility or some other options. So we are actively thinking about that to see what we can do. Because we understand, I, I understand completely what you're saying. I'm trying to think, and we're exploring ways that we can think about it, A, that's legal, that's very important, I know you all, and that ensuring it's a lower risk. So we are looking to see what we can do with our current statute and rule and see if there could be some flexibility. So I hear you, and I've been hearing it from a lot of, a lot of our counties. And then we are exploring to see what we, what we can do to try to lessen some of that. So I hear you, and, and we are, we're going to see what we can, what we can do. But I'm a little bit hamstrung with, again, with our current written statute and rules. But we are looking for flexibility.
Is there a timetable that we would be looking at those adjustments? Because to Mrs. Ryan's point, not only is it cumbersome to our school system, it's difficult for our parents who find out that, surprise, your kid is going to be home for 14 days. And as a parent, you know, we're all concerned about the learning loss that's happening as our child sits at home. And as a parent, we're also concerned about how we're going to go to work the next day. And we now have to find childcare for a child that's been quarantined, who is labeled as having the plague. So I think, you know, how, how soon, what, what sort of timetable can we expect those adjustments?
So a couple of things I want to say, remember that there are some, there are some currently available quarantine options. So we don't, and then this really is up to Director Madden, but 14 days is the full. There's an option of 10 days or seven with a negative test at day five. But again, ensuring that for the full 14 days, the person is still wearing a mask. So there are already current options for shorter quarantine periods. I don't, I can't promise you, or I don't want to quote you a timeframe because we still are even exploring what could be possible. So I don't want to give you a timeframe of if and when and what we can do. But I will promise you, we're looking into it.
And then it's also, as far as quarantines are concerned, just, just, just to clarify, a quarantine from the health department is a written order from the health department director. So, you know, if, if a nurse, if a nurse calls and says, your son needs to quarantine, that is not a written quarantine order. So what are the parents, and you know, that, that's what we, as a board, are here elected to do, is to, is to stand up for the rights of the parents and children in this county. So what are the parents' legal rights when a nurse calls and says, you need to quarantine? And that's not an actual quarantine written order?
Yeah, and I don't want to get too far down into some of the very specific legal pieces. I'm very happy to let, you know, your attorneys work with our attorneys because I don't want to misquote and give false legal advice. But one thing I want to say is that there is an application of a control measure. Doesn't necessarily mean you have to have a written legal isolation and quarantine order for every individual. You can apply quarantine orders and, excuse me, you can apply control measures, and the expectation is people comply with those control measures. It doesn't have to be a written legal isolation or quarantine order for every individual person for the application of those control measures.
So you mentioned earlier, fully vaccinated, regardless of mask or status, do not have to quarantine at all. Over 15, in the last 15 days ago, Duke University had 364 cases. Eight were unvaccinated, the rest were vaccinated. So how does that work that we're putting mask or no mask, they're fine to stay, even if they've been in close contact for 24 hours with somebody that has the virus? And we see the breakthrough cases, where's the science that shows that's acceptable? But if a kid is in close contact, we can't put a mask on them and have them come back to the class?
Yeah, so some of the data around vaccinations, we are seeing some more post-vaccination cases, especially with this Delta. So you're right. But overall, when we look at our data and we look at the data, looking at the past four weeks, still, there is a high level of protection with vaccination. And again, as I said upfront, that people who are fully vaccinated are more than four and a half times less likely to become infected than somebody who is unvaccinated. So we have that good data point there. And again, the other data point that we have of mask versus unmasked is that the mask-on-mask, very low transmission rate. But when we have unmasked exposure, we've seen that higher transmission rate. So those are some of the data points that have been used. And again, to inform those published control measures, which then we follow.
It just doesn't make sense to me that, yeah, there might be four times less likely, but they're still transmissible from a breakthrough case. Going to be less symptomatic as well, according to the data. And yet, you're still looking at a 364, and you know, one school, 364 positive cases and only eight were unvaccinated. How does that translate to the, what you're seeing there? Because it seems entirely opposite.
Yeah, I mean, I think when we see it statewide and nationally wide, we still see much lower rates of transmission in our fully vaccinated population when we look, when we look at statewide and nationwide.
So then why is it not acceptable just to put a mask on somebody that's been exposed? Leave them in school?
And that is one of the things that we are exploring to see if that might, again, that is, I want to just take a step back and say, currently, as I said, what, what we are, are required control measures are those that are published by the CDC. And so if we were to consider a different quarantine option, we would have to think through, is there flexibility to, and where would we get the data to be able to inform that? So those are some of the things that we are thinking through.
It just seems to me everything works at a snail's pace. We've been in this pandemic for 18 months and we're still studying everything and everything keeps changing. So I mean, how, how are we ever going to get called up and get to the point we can educate kids?
Sorry, sir, I couldn't hear, I couldn't hear your question.
I said, we've been in a pandemic for 18 months and we continue to study, but we also know that variants are going to continue to change. So as things continue to change, how long are we going to be stuck before we can go back to educating kids in a classroom setting? Waiting on protocols to change and waiting on policy to change from a state level?
Well, and I say, though, that, again, as we are busily seeing this evolving science, I think you have seen our policies change based on the evolving science, right? So a really great, I think, example is last year, what we saw, and if you remember, last year, even if kids, and almost everybody required masking last year, even those mask-on-mask contacts, those children still had to quarantine. Based on this evolving science, that, I think that's a great example of the policy changing, that you are masked, you don't have to quarantine. That was a great application of. have to quarantine. That was a great application of the science to an adjusting policy. Same thing with vaccination, same thing with the 90-day quarantine. So we are trying to incorporate that data as quickly as possible and use that to inform policies. And again, I think the changes and the exception of quarantine policies, which are new, is based on that evolving science. So I think, um, everybody is committed to following that evolving science and have our policies change as we can.
Mr. Chair, Novo, Atrium, and Caremount put out information just in the last week or two. They had 128 patients on ventilators, and 122 were non-vaccinated. And that's in our local area, and that was published. So that would be one of the benefits to have our local medical community to speak as well.
I think another, another, I guess I'll, oops, I guess I used the word frustration, is that if you take our school population, and maybe the charter school population here in Lincoln County, that's about 17%, I think, of our population. And what we're trying to say in this is that in order to control COVID-19 in Lincoln County, because there's no, there's nobody else that has a 25-page document to go by, there's nobody, there's no business, there's no, our government agencies.
Nursing homes.
Nurse, I mean, there, there, there's not. And so, we're going to take 17% of our population, and we're going to mask them for only seven hours a day, and only for five days a week, and we're going to control the spread of COVID-19. And that's just, is, it, it just doesn't, I, I can't make it make sense. And so, that, that is the, I guess, frustrating part for me is that unless, you know, as a county, or there's going to be a mandate, or there's going to be whatever, which is not going to happen, right, then, then I feel like we are, we are, as human beings, we want something that we can control when we are, when we have fear. And, and, and it's completely understandable. And I'm the same way. And so, I feel like this is the one thing that we feel like we can control, and the one thing, because none of us can control COVID, so we have jumped on this, and it has become the most divisive thing across our state, and it's really sad. And until, from the top down, we have some leadership that says, you know what, COVID is real, and COVID is dangerous, and you need to be taking some extra precautions. And we're going to get through this together, and here are some things you can do. And, and we have X number of cases, but we also have X number of cases that do not have COVID-19. And still, we, until we change the messaging and don't have people come to a press conference and say, this is dangerous, and if you are unvaccinated, COVID-19 will find you, like it's lurking around every corner. And until we change that messaging, and until we change the messaging that the vaccinated individuals are so upset at the unvaccinated individuals, nothing is going to change in this state, and the divisiveness is going to continue. But we've got to have some leadership from the top down that promotes, promotes control measures in a positive manner. And, because that's not, fear is not, inciting fear in people is not, is not leadership. Leadership is saying, here are your risks, here are some things that you can do to prevent it, and here, here are some control measures, and here, here are some possibilities, right? But at the end of the day, you need to make your own risk assessment for you and your family. I'm telling you what the risk is, and you need to make your own risk assessment. But we got to stop this, this messaging that we have, if anything is going to change.
About that, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I, um, kind of missed out. There's two doctors here that live in Denver and have children in Lincoln County schools that have come and we're going to see.
I can't hear you, Todd.
They were going to see if they could speak, and that the open comment or, and didn't stand up quick enough. So I just want to make sure the board's aware that there are two doctors that actually live in Lincoln County, and are citizens of Lincoln County, with students in Lincoln County schools that are here, willing to speak to the board if the board's willing to listen to them.
We, we've already passed the public comment. I'll just.
I think the board.
I'm willing to listen.
I think the board has a discretion to reopen that.
I'm willing to listen.
Not unless we're going to offer a listen to every single person sitting in the room tonight.
I'm willing to stay here all night.
Make the motion to listen to him.
Motion Ms. Avery?
A second.
The second Ms. Heather?
Yeah.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And those have it.
I do have a question about what Heather was talking about, like, what about our seniors? Our seniors have to have vaccinations to come to school. So it's like schools and institution where we have to follow rules, and you have to be a certain age, and you have to come to school when you have attendance. So we set policy for our skit, our kids to become contributing citizens. So is this just not part of the protocol that we, as educated adults, raising contributing citizens, we have all of these policies, we've got hundreds of policies, you got to come to school, you can't be party? I mean, we just have a lot of rules. It's just, it's not part of?
Is what not? Are you asking me, me the question, Ms. Heather?
No, I'm just like, whoever's, all of us, I'm asking the question you were talking about.
I was talking about the fear messaging.
Yeah. But I'm saying, we have other things that's, is that considered fear too? It's our policy that we have for.
I can, I can tell you that if.
I didn't see it as fear. I didn't know if that was your, your personal opinion, because mine's not like that.
I think you could take any disease and virus across, across this state that is happening. And if you put it on the news and count the cases every single day of it, let's take cancer, for instance. If you, if you put on the news every single day, how many cases of cancer were reported that day, and it just kept going up and up and up, which is way more than COVID, by the way, and it kept going up and up and up every day, do you not think that people would begin to be very, very fearful of cancer?
Well, I'm fearful, but I take precautions. I have mammograms, I go for regular checkups, I exercise, you know, I try to, I'm not fearful, but I do what my doctors recommend to try to prevent cancer.
And you have, and you have that freedom and that individuality to do that?
This is for 30 days. This is not a lifetime. It's a short period of time to get to the other side.
I agree. I, I agree with you, it is, and.
As we move back to topic, do we have any more topic, uh, questions for Dr. Tilson, while she's still here?
I'd like to thank her for contributing and being here tonight.
What is the state level now with COVID, 22% or 23%?
Again, thank you for the opportunity. I hear you. I understand how hard this is, and know that we're committed to communication transparency and trying to find flexibilities where they are, so.
Hold, hold on just one second. We did have additional question if Ms. Avery would turn her microphone on so you can, since she can hear you.
Percentage, according to Dr., Mr. Madden over here, are things, we're going up. I don't know if I heard correctly, 22% is our COVID rate now in the state. What we ever can become a, a community, again, is we have to be lower than 5%. So we're playing with 22, 23% of COVID out here now, and we can't take a chance on hurting or someone dying again over COVID. We can't, we have to protect, which means everybody has to wear their mask. And on the weekends, we're talking about five days a week, well, it's obviously Saturday and Sunday, that they, the parents have to be with their children to make sure that they're being protected, obviously, from other people. So it's just, it's, it's just a vicious circle, but still, the mask is the only safe thing we have right now to make sure that we can get our straight down. I'd like to get a copy of everything they got, because we don't have any information they were talking about. So maybe we can get a copy, so we can get the next discussion, okay?
That was, that was sent to you in email yesterday.
Yeah, Ms. Ms. Tilson's, Dr., excuse me, Dr. Tilson's email was sent to every board member yesterday.
Well, I mean, the, Mr. Madden, do we have that information?
I don't have that information either.
I'm not trying to be controversial, but, I mean, I did meet with them yesterday. Was that presented, or those numbers, or how often? You have to present them. How often are they presented? I only want to know to make informed decisions and, and be knowledgeable and answer questions when asked, or, I mean, how often do you present those metrics? Is it weekly? Is it, I was asking Mr. Madden, or?
You mean face-to-face with people during the week?
No, I mean, how often they publish them? You have to publish them.
Ms. Madden, she was asking how often you publish your metrics?
Graphic every week on Wednesday currently. We had, we had gotten away from that, but then when, with the surge of Delta, we started putting that back out for the community, obviously, for their benefit. That's how we do that. Is that your question?
Yes, just how often we're, you know, how often it's published.
What's the surge right now, 22%?
I'm sorry, ma'am, I can't hear you.
What's the surge right now, 22% or?
Um, you reframe, reframe the question?
I don't know.
What do you mean by the positivity?
Yes, you stated a while ago, like 22% of COVID. And state, the only way we'll get, get rid of this COVID is we get down below, say, 5% or more, we can maybe.
We currently have 508 active cases as of today.
In Lincoln County?
The positivity rate's about 14.1% as of today.
14%?
Yes, ma'am.
Not 5%?
No, ma'am.
Okay. We're still in danger.
I'm sorry?
We're still in danger, regularly.
We're still in an active transmission, high state of transmission in regards to Delta based on case counts. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Madden or Ms. Tilson? Or, excuse me, Dr. Tilson? Dr. Tilson, I would like to thank you for taking time to join us tonight, and we appreciate you being here.
Thank you. Appreciate again your leadership and the invitation.
I must have missed something. Were we going to listen to the two doctors or not? I didn't.
The vote failed.
I'm sorry.
The vote failed because public comments.
Oh, okay.
Board members, I'd like, I'm going to, um, pass out, I'd like for you to review a document that contains our previous protocols minus the control measures that our Health Department handles. Um, and Mr. Chairman, if, if we could just, a minute to allow board members to read through this, please?
Can we take a break and read through it? Can we take like a few minutes to read through it?
Yeah, we'll take, take.
My glasses fall off if my mask don't.
Where did this come from?
This is what I, I typed up from our previous protocols, which incorporates all the previous protocols minus what the Health Department handles.
While we're reading this, there's two things I'd like to know. One is, what's Dr. Allen's recommendation for the next 30 days?
I couldn't hear you, Todd.
I'd like to know what Dr. Allen's recommendation is to the board with regards to masking for the next 30 days.
Is that a motion?
No, I'm asking for his recommendation.
Oh, oh, you're asking for his recommendation. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
It's a complicated answer, Mr. Wolfhorst, because where I see both sides of the coin, or, um, the groups that are, are, are on both sides of the issue, our recommendation really focuses on trying to find a way to keep our kids in school, trying to continue learning, um, face-to-face, and how we can best do that by, while maintaining, um, safety for our students and our staff, um, maintaining operations, because we do have, um, the quarantine piece does present a challenge for us to maintain our staff. It also, um, does serve a measure, as we've talked about in catching some cases, um, that could be potentially a spreader. So my answer is really not clear tonight, because I do support the notion of trying to figure out a different way to quarantine, um, to maintain our, our face-to-face opportunities for our teachers, but also employment for our staff. One concern that I have coming up, and, and this is something that unless the federal government changes their, their actions, um, the federal leave that is available now to, to folks with, um, COVID under quarantine ends at the end of September. And so where that leave has been available for, for our staff to take, um, will come to an end. And so that creates a, an issue for, for pay. From a staffing perspective, for our kids to learn, to continue to grow, we've made good strides. Um, and, and that's important to have our staff here and our kids here. So I don't know that I have a, a clear recommendation for doing this or that. It's a combination of trying to figure out a way to adjust the quarantining piece while giving people the option, um, as they feel choose, as they so choose for their families and themselves, to mask up. And right now, that option doesn't really exist with the state's, um, guidelines. And that's where we're at a crossroads, because within our group, um, we, we deal with this routinely, and we deal with this systematically, almost daily, multiple times daily, of what to do in this situation, that situation. There is no one situation that is the same. Um, our folks that take these phone calls and questions are presented with a variety of challenges every day. So I don't know that answers your question, Mr. Wolfhorst, but in, in a way that if I could take a, a combination of several things and make it our own individual plan, but I don't know if that plan would pass, uh, what Dr. Tilson referenced as the appropriate control measures as outlined by the CDC.
So let me make it a little easier. Are you in favor of mask optional or mask mandatory?
To me, mask mandatory, um, keeps us in school. Mask optional also can keep us in school, but to me, it's not a matter of mask, as it is a matter of quarantine. And that's, that's where I land right now, is the quarantine is more, more of an issue than masking. The masking seems to be the issue of society. Um, the vaccination is the issue of society, but the quarantining piece, to me, is more important of something that we've, we need to, to discuss and figure out a way around that.
So under the current toolkit that the state's passed, if we're mask optional and there are positive COVID cases, will it be quarantining more students, correct?
Under the current toolkit, got it? Yes, that is correct.
And, I, Ms. Ryan, did this come from you, or did this come from staff, or where, where did this document come from?
This is, I just handed this out tonight to you guys.
Something you drew up?
It's really, it's really our previous one, um, without the control measures that the Health Department is doing, and has been doing, and.
But the motion that was passed back in August is not what this document says. The motion that was passed in August.
Right, because we have to vote on it every month.
Said it was relied on Dr. Madden. I just, that's missing from this, is it not?
Dr. Madden has seen this.
Or, I guess it's not Dr. Madden, or Mr. Madden, excuse me. But, Mr. Madden, I just.
I mean, Mr. Madden, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Madden, I'm, just, my other question is for you. Um, this document that's been handed to us says that we're not going to contact trace. So.
It says the Health Department's going to contact tracing, which is what the Health Department is already doing through our school nurses.
So you're saying the school system's not contact tracing?
The school system hasn't been contact tracing. The Health Department nurses have been doing it.
So the staff isn't participating with that?
They have to be, they have to be cooperative with our Health Department, and I think they have been.
But under this document, you're saying they don't need to be?
Under this document, what?
You're saying that they don't need to be cooperative. It's all going to be on the Health Department.
Where did I say that in this document?
It says that they will be supported by the K-12 school in collaboration with the local Health Department.
Okay, so that's, so that's not going to change. So we're going to report the, the COVID cases and the contact tracing.
We can't control the Health Department's control measures.
The nurses that they provide to us, and then we will be quarantining these two, still, we'll have to quarantine more children, correct?
Well, so, we, the nurses can still call it a quarantine, but as a parent has a right, if there's not a written quarantine order, that is simply a request.
Is that your interpretation?
Not entirely. The, uh.
Thank you.
The, uh, quarantine guidelines that the nurses provide are under the premise of the CDC. The quarantine guidelines that the nurses provide are under the premise of the CDC guidance, which is what Dr. Tilson referred to through the North Carolina Commission of Public Health, what we're bound to. So, the difference is, is a parent is given that as the guidance. Therefore, they're expected to follow that. So they are under quarantine, or IE control measures under that notification. However, what she referred to was there's no official order, which would imply that if they violated that, they would be able to levy like a misdemeanor or against that person, which we, which we would not do in this scenario. We would not issue orders. We would simply apply the guidance as directed under the state. We'd, we expect the parents to follow that guidance.
From an operational standpoint, if there's no order and the parent's not abiding by it, what, without an order, is there any recourse for them to appeal the request? Or is that why we're staying away from orders? Is because the order, the, the appeal process is within an order that's been issued? But if you're not issuing an order, then they, the parent does not have the ability to challenge it?
Well, the parent can certainly ignore the guidance and expectation for the child to quarantine. However, there would, there would be notification within the school that that, that that child would be under that situation. So therefore, it would really comply, it would, it would fall under the compliance of the school in order to recognize that.
If a nurse sends a child home with COVID, they can't come back to school the next day because the principal would have to say, I'm sorry, you'll have to go back home because you've got, you've got COVID. So the nurse's responsibility is to help every school. But like you say, they don't have a written thing. Everybody keeps saying writing something. We're not writing anything. If the child's sick with COVID, they need to go home. Teacher's sick with COVID, they need to go home for fourteen days or maybe more. We hope not. But I just don't see the point in some of these things you're, you're saying about it. We need a rule, we need to write something down, because COVID's so dangerous. I mean, everybody knows what the problem is, you know, or they should.
I'm gonna say we're not referring to positive cases, we're referring to exposures.
Well, could I make, could I make a motion?
You need me to stay up here?
Based on the non-medical refreshments locally and to keep our kids in school, I recommend and make a motion that we have masks for the next thirty days.
Thank you.
A motion and a second, further discussion?
For the next thirty days.
Three days.
Thirty.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to speak. I'll speak loud, I apologize. Anyway, thirty days, more than what we've already got.
It, it would at very least be until the next board meeting. The board, the board has to consider this on a monthly basis pursuant to a new state law that was adopted a couple of weeks ago. So you're, you're going to be having this conversation every, every month for this entire school year, regardless of whatever decision you made in the previous month. So, it would at least be until the next board meeting in October.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye? Opposed?
No.
The mask option will be effective on September the twenty-ninth, which is two weeks from tomorrow. And in regards specifically to COVID-19, effective immediately unless a student is positive for COVID-19 and is in isolation, is symptomatic, or has been given a written quarantine order from the local health department, they should be on school campus.
I have discussion. I don't know if it's the proper time or not.
But that's a motion, only if it gets seconded, so.
Second.
Now we have discussion.
May I ask for a clarifying question before discussion? Ms. Ryan, you indicated that this would go into effect September twenty-ninth? Is that what you said? I just want to clarify.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
We are in a, a medical crisis. Our whole world is, and we have doctors locally here. I, I really would feel more comfortable letting them speak. We have that ability to let them speak. And they, they, that's what our mission statement is. We're to have the community involvement, and we're to provide a safe environment. And none of us are medical doctors sitting here, not one of us. Now, I am asking that before we make such big decisions, we have our doctors speak. They take care of our community.
Do you want to make a motion?
Just for a form of discussion, Ms. Hevner, this will be implemented on September the twenty-ninth. We will then vote again on this on October twelfth, which is two weeks later.
A lot can happen in two weeks, and we have them here in the house. I mean, what, does it hurt?
So just to clarify, is the, the reason that the doctors that are here, they're not able to speak is because there wasn't the proper sign up? And then it's not considered really in emergent nature because it's been on the agenda for what feels like an eternity now? So, just to clarify, it's not that anybody's being excluded. If we're going to follow policy, if our job is to follow policy, even when it's something that we may or may not agree with, our goal is to follow policy, correct?
We, we do have policy.
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. So, Ms. Sutton, yes, the board, the board policy requires people to sign up, I think, Wednesday prior to the board meeting in order to speak a public comment. That's board policy, I think, is twenty-three ten. And, but the board does have the discretion to allow people to speak. It takes a majority of the board to, to speak that did not sign up. The board took a vote and at Mr. Wolfhorst's request, and that motion failed.
Thank you for clarifying.
Do you have a motion and a second, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
What are we voting on?
Opposed?
No, I don't even want to vote on either. I want my thirty days, is what I'm wanting.
I'm happy to repeat my motion.
Okay, I think there's a lot to win on that.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I think it would also be good for you or Ms. Ryan to, nobody else has this document except for board members. Maybe just briefly again explain to what's in this document. I know Ms. Ryan did that once, but it may be good-
Ms. Ryan, would you mind me the document that you provided?
No, no. All face coverings, masks, masks will be optional for all students and staff of Lincoln County schools for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Exception will be bus transportation effective January twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention issued a federal order requiring face coverings on all conveyances with limited exceptions such as private vehicles. All students and staff of Lincoln County schools will be required to wear a mask on all school buses. The next section handling possible suspected presumptive or confirmed positive cases of COVID-19. Students, staff, and community members will not be screened by staff for COVID-19 symptoms upon entry into the school building. Schools should follow their typical procedures for exclusion as they would for any type of illness if a child is symptomatic at school. Lincoln County schools does recommend that parents and guardians do at-home screening for COVID-19 symptoms, see below, before coming to school each day. Those symptoms are fever, temperature of a hundred point four, high or sore throat, cough, difficulty breathing, new loss of taste or smell, diarrhea, or vomiting, new onset of severe headache, especially with a fever. Lincoln County schools will report all positive COVID-19 cases to the Lincoln County Health Department. Social and physical distancing. Social and physical distancing means keeping space between yourself and other people outside of your household is a key tool to decrease, decrease the spread of COVID-19. Below are the latest CDC recommendations on physical distancing. Because of the importance of in-person learning, schools where not everyone is fully vaccinated should implement physical distancing to the extent possible within their structures, but not exclude students from in-person learning to keep a minimum distance requirement. Contact tracing. Contact tracing will be conducted by the local health department, but can be supported by the K-12 school in collaboration with the local health department. Diagnostic screening. LCS will partner with the Lincoln County Health Department to offer rapid testing options for parents to be able to quickly determine as possible COVID infection. Testing will be conducted by a Lincoln County Health Department employee. Lincoln County schools will also operate a telemedicine program in conjunction with H R M Health that will be able to offer testing for students beginning the twenty-one, twenty-two school year as needed should a parent decide to use this program. Visitors. LCS recommends that schools be open to all visitors as in a normal school year. Layered approach. Lincoln County schools is aware of possible increases with positivity rates among staff and students with respect to COVID-19. Per state law, Lincoln County Schools Board of Education will continue to discuss and vote on these protocols monthly during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And my motion is that we adopt the protocols I have handed you, which includes mask optional, to be effective September the twenty-ninth, which is two weeks from tomorrow. And in regards specifically to COVID-19, effective immediately unless a student is positive for COVID-19 and is in isolation, is symptomatic, or has been given a written quarantine order from the local health department, they should be on school campus. And, and for, Mr. Chair, if I could, I will add, I will amend that motion to say effective immediately unless a student or staff member is positive for COVID-19, is, and is in isolation, is symptomatic, or has been given a written quarantine order from the local health department, they should be on school campus.
Well, amendment to the original motion, do I need a second on the amendment?
Second.
Um, can I have a discussion?
Yes, ma'am, no, discussion.
I, I'm just, I'm having trouble wrapping my head around that. None of us are medical doctors here. We've listened to Dr. Tilson, and we're adopting a policy by our vice chair that recommends no mask. And we've heard that keeping masks in school, it's only thirty days, it's not a lifetime. We'll keep our kids in school. Dr. Tilson said, we need to wear masks. And we have non-medical healthcare locally professionals that say, we need to wear masks for thirty days. Why would we adopt a policy from a board member that has no medical background? And this is not to be ugly or mean.
Do you have a policy that's been written by somebody else?
I have a problem with someone dying over this because we're going to be, I think, stupid because we're not taking care of our kids, our teachers, administrators, cafeteria workers, everybody. Everybody needs to wear the mask for the next thirty days and then see where it's going to drop down to. See if we're making any progress by wearing the mask. I just don't think it's, I think it's going to keep on going up, but I don't want to lose anybody's life over this.
I just want to-
Yes, Mr. Wolfhorst?
I just want to clarify, there's a, that I hear earlier that there's a hundred and twelve that currently are mask mandatory and three that are not, and we're going to join those three.
It's, it's changed, those are old data. There's several that have reversed course again.
I'm sorry?
There's several of the counties that I believe that were touted to have reversed-
But of the fifty or so that started the school year mask optional, I think the vast majority, maybe forty-seven or forty-eight of them, went to a mask mandatory pretty quickly.
Everybody's gone back to mask. Probably a hundred percent gone back to mask in the state of North Carolina.
Mr. Mull, there's, there's more than three now.
We're so much darker blue.
But I just, I mean, it just seems like the masks have worked and kept our kids in school and, and the school districts that have not had the mask on, that have lost thousands of kids to quarantine and remote learning. So, I just guess that's the path we're going on.
Is there a liability to our school system if a kid or a teacher dies due to COVID?
I want to answer your question. But I also want to make sure everybody understands that what's on the floor right now is just an amendment suggested by Ms. Ryan, too. And I, I don't know if, you may want to clarify the difference in your amendment? What, what, what changed?
The only thing that changed was it's student or staff.
So, but in your first motion, it was just student, and then you made it student or staff? Is that accurate?
Yes.
If, if there's unanimous consent, the motion can just pass, huh?
I'm sorry?
If there's unanimous, I'm just telling the chairman, if there's unanimous consent, the motion, motion can just pass.
Okay, is there any problem with the amendment that she made to the original motion?
I have a problem with the amendment.
Then we would need to vote on the amendment.
Then, just voting on the amendment, changing it from just students to student and staff. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we're back to the original amendment, our original motion with the amendment to the original vote. There's a further discussion on that.
I would like to answer Ms. Hevner's question.
Okay, please do.
Um, so your question was discussing legal liability. So last summer, the General Assembly did adopt an statutory immunity, not, not just for local school boards or local organization, or local governments, but, but really all organizations regarding COVID-19 and the transmission of COVID-19, basically providing us, including us, immunity from litigation and liability regarding transmission of COVID-19 in our school buildings. Now, one, one of the exceptions to that is if we acted intentionally to infect somebody, which I don't think any of you all or our staff would ever attempt to do that, or if we were somehow another way reckless. And so I do think, you know, obviously, we can be sued by anybody for any reason. You've probably heard me say that a hundred times before, many times. And, and so, and I'm certainly happy to talk more about this too, since it is attorney-client privilege to talk about it in closed session. But certainly liability is always going to be an issue in any of these regards. But we do have, we do have the immunity bill, statutory immunity that does assist us. Um, I, I mean, I will say that if there is somebody who, heaven forbid, you know, something happened and while we were not following recommendations, and that may open us up to more liability, absolutely. I don't, I, I don't think there's any question about that here. I think everybody would understand that. Again, though, we can be sued for anything, for any reason, and we are talking about a worst-case scenario, because you also have to demonstrate through pretty high, pretty high level of evidence that somebody actually contracted COVID-19, where they alleged to have contracted it, i.e., in our case, school, which I do think could potentially be difficult from an evidentiary standpoint. So, you pay me to worry about liability? And so, yes, that's absolutely what I worry about. I would also tell you if I thought you were doing something illegal as too. So, please keep that in mind. And should that be something you consider? Absolutely. It should be in your consideration when you make your decisions.
And Ms. Hevner, I will also just add to that when you said, these protocols that I handed you this evening are the same protocols that we voted on last month. It's just taken off the fluff wording that was under some of the, the headings. Nothing on these protocols in, in, as far as what's going to be done, has essentially changed. The protocols that we had last time, as a matter of fact, including the cloth face mask coverings, were for optional mask. And then Mr. Madden sent us a letter asking us for the thirty-day, you know, requesting for a thirty-day mask mandate and, or making mask mandatory for thirty days. And then, which, that, we will have fulfilled that as of September eighteenth. But when you say you're taking a protocol written by me, just know it's the same protocol. And I'd be happy to show you the protocol from last month versus this month. And I would also like to add that I do have healthcare background. I am a pharmacist, and I have more healthcare background than anyone on this board. So, thank you.
We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I still have a problem with chance of a child or adult dying because you're removing these masks off of these faces. And really, with how high this rate is in North Carolina and in Lincoln County, we cannot, absolutely cannot hurt anyone. And like you say, we just, we've got to protect what we own, and we own these children. They're our children, too, because I can't take a little kitty gunner's mine, too. But we're going to have to work on this and, I just feel that the mask should stay another thirty days.
With all due respect, we do not own these children.
I want to, I want to be on the record. I want to be known, Lincoln County schools, for being a great school with education and unity and all of these positive things. Not one of the only counties that is mask optional in Lincoln, in North Carolina. I don't want to be known for that. I know, but-
So, we do have a motion and a second, and I will call for a roll call vote.
Mr. Mullin?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Avery?
No.
Ms. Hevner?
No.
Yes.
Ms. Sutton?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfhorst?
Motion carries. Motion carries. Next, we'll move into the policies, which stood open for 25 days for improvement. Dr. Earl?
There's been no feedback given to the policies, so they are as presented.
Got no feedback? Would we like to take them individually? Does anybody have a problem with doing them all together?
All together.
Entertained a motion to approve policy 5010, 5220, 5220R, 5220E2, 5220E3, 5220E5, 5220E6, 5250, 5250R, 5250E, 5250E2, 7630, 8225, 7360, and 8225R.
Make a motion to approve.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Hevner, we're to communications. I'll let you take the lead on.
Yeah, I, I think one of the most important things is communication. And I am a less than a year school board member, and there's just been many things that I would like to have some kind of communication policy or communication protocol. One of the things is like what we've experienced this week. If there is, my expectation is if one board member knows something, we all should, so we can make informed decisions and inform our stakeholders. And I think this would keep unity, because we all have the purpose and unity, is for educating and being advocate for Lincoln County Schools. So if there is a, a meeting with the board or the co-chair or anyone else that I, I would like the information so we could make informed decisions. However, we need to establish that. It would be appreciated.
Would you like to bring a written protocol to our next meeting for a work session?
Sure. With this, Ms. Hevner, would, would this protocol also include that as you speak to people in the community and teachers and people calling you, that you would share that with the board?
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and sometimes I try to contribute information, and I don't know if I need to be contributing that information. Do I need to pass this along? I need some kind of guidance. If, if I hear something or a stakeholder's concerned, where do I voice that? Do I just come in here and catch everybody off guard, or do I like present it prior to? I would just like, like a protocol of what should be handled so we can work together as a board and make good decisions and informed decisions. So I, I think there could have been a lot. One thing that really concerned me this week was the amount of people who contacted me about Atrium. If I would, or the doctors from Atrium could not speak, if I would have known the reason, I could have stopped a lot of chatter and maybe a lot of bad will if I would have known the reason. But I was getting in, the email I forwarded to you was forwarded to me. It wasn't, I wasn't saying, I said, "Are you aware?" But I just forwarded you the email. And then when you came back.
Yeah, I answered it.
Yeah, you said, "Per policy, policy, policy." But I think to make good communication, it would have been better if I would have known that when it went out, if we could have just all been included. This is a respected medical, chief medical officer from Atrium. This is why they're not allowed to speak, and the other doctor as well. Because they are partners and they provide to our community. They probably give over a million dollars in support. It's, it's just part of the commu, we're a small community, and everybody knows everybody, and people talk. And I just want to be, bring good things. That's why I ran for school board. I want to be, bring good things, good positive energy. I want to help.
And we can work into the communication protocols into a policy, but if you would start with a rough draft, we'll have something to work for.
Well, I have a, I can put my thoughts on paper, but I have very little experience. So I'll be more than glad to put what my expectations are and what would help, I think.
I think that would help as we formulate moving forward. Mr. Shatley's over here shaking his head that that would be very appropriate.
It's just to build goodwill between us, the community, our stakeholders, and, and be a bigger, stronger, better school system. So, and I would appreciate the same respect. If I know something, I'll share it. If you know something, please do. And with Mr. Madden, if y'all do have a meeting, it would be so helpful because sometimes I come in here and I don't know what I'm walking into. And you've had privilege to hear and know the statistics and know the information. So it would be nice for the rest of the board, or me speaking for myself. It would be nice to have privilege to that information as well.
Anything else on communication?
This public participation at the school board meetings that we're going to be discussing next round, a lot of key words need be, maybe need to be changed because it says citizens can speak. And I thought, well, if you're a US citizen, that was what that was implying instead of had the wrong address. You know, I, we'll clear that up, clarify it.
In the context, and we can clean that up, but in the context, it does say that we are duly elected to run the school, the business of the school system, which would be citizens of Lincoln County, because those are our constituents. And, you know, that was a policy that has been updated about, it's came in in 1987, and I'm sure Ms. Avery, you're on the board a lot of times with those revisions along the way. So the last one was in 2019, and they just struck a few sentences off of that, I believe. When I went back to look it up, there was not much change other than taking out a reference to a previous policy about participation. We will bring that up at our October work session as well. If you're out, I'll make sure those two items are on the agenda. Anything else on communication? We'll move along to the consent agenda items for approval amendments for the board work sessions for July 13th. A board meeting for July the 13th. Special call meeting on August the 3rd. Board work sessions August the 3rd. And the board meeting August the 10th, as well as personnel recommendations. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Make a motion to approve.
A motion, Ms. Ryan?
Second.
Ms. Sutton? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And as Ms. Hevner mentioned earlier, September 18th, if you'll take a look at your reminders and announcements, September 18th, the Iowa County Marching Band preview at Lincoln High School from 7:00 to 9:00. Hope for everyone to join that. Hard to believe, but progress reports are already going to be sent out on September the 20th. We will have our work session on October the 5th, and we'll start that at 6:00 PM. Law conference for anybody who wants to attend that, October the 3rd through the 15th. Mr. Wolfworth, you are attending that, the board. And then we have a work session on October 12th. Plus Delta? Ms. Avery, I'll give you the honors.
Make the most we adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Avery.
Second.
Second, Ms. Sutton. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. We're now adjourned.